Hey, it's me. I want to thank everybody for joining us this evening. For a very informative evening on the Yahar River Park. First off, I'd like to thank Director Dan Glynn for organizing this meeting and getting all our guest speakers to join us. We have a packed agenda, but I'd like to give a shout out to our guest speakers from Strand, Interflu, Recreation Engineering and Planning, Wisconsin DNR, and the mayor from Salida, Colorado, as well as thank you all, community members, for joining us and listening tonight to this very informative meeting. And thanks again to the mayor and council for being here as well. I can't see the full agenda because it's gotten too big. But I think I would like, you know, just for the record, if mayor, if you could just like take a brief roll call, just so we have everybody know who is in attendance.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. Obviously, I'm here, I do count as part of the quorum for the committee of the whole. And the committee of the whole will be run by President Hirsch, so I'll take the roll call. Alder Person Borzma?
Here.
Caravelo?
Here.
Doom?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Hirsch?
Yeah.
Hunt?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Legaki?
Here.
Mieski?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Tukalski?
Here.
Schumacher?
Here.
Oh, everybody is here. And just so you know, this meeting is being recorded, and it should also be airing on WSTO. And Holly couldn't be here tonight because she's doing pole worker training, so I'm going to take minutes for our clerk tonight. And with that said, it's all yours, Regina.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to take on a brief overview of the objective. If you're not talking, please mute your mic. We're getting a lot of feedback right now, so please take the opportunity to mute your mic. Thank you. Again, the objective of this meeting was to bring both the community and council together to update you on the Yahar River Park vision, all the scientific studies that have been done, the Whitewater Park Steering Committee and the Park and Rec Committee recommendations, the current progress, and our next steps. Just to remind you, because this is a full agenda, and we have lots of guest speakers, and to be really cognizant of their time and getting us through this long agenda, one, we have, within each section, we have allowed it at the end, time for questions, so please hold your questions till that end of that section, and then we'll have questions for like, you know, three to five minutes, and then at the end of the whole presentations, we'll have a bigger discussion, more questions. Because of this also package in, and because it was situated as a community of the whole meeting, for the community, or Committee of the Whole Meeting, not the community of a whole meeting, Committee of the Whole Meeting, the community, we ask, if you have a question to put it in the chat box, which is a little kind of balloon up to your upper right on your screen, you just click on that and write in your question, and if there's time at the end of all the presentations, we'll try to answer some of those. Otherwise, Dan and I will work on answering all those in the coming week and posting it on the website. So again, you know, let's be respectful, let's get our great presenters going, and but first, there's always business about approving old minutes from, I forgot that we had two previous Committee of the Whole Meetings, one in January, the six of the landmarks, and the second was back regarding elders and tiff back in October. So, do I have a motion to approve those two minutes before we get on to our presentations?
So moved?
A second.
Excellent, I think we have Lisa and Ben and Sid. Any revisions or edits to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Great, motion carries. Now, I'll let Dan start us off on this wonderful ride of presentations. So, go ahead, Dan.
Like Regina said, this is like a real overview of everything that we've done to date, and a lot of the history of the project. And so these are the different sections of each of the presentation, and then almost at every end of each section, there's going to be an opportunity to ask questions for council members. So I'll start off with, what are the objectives of the project? So really, there's three main objectives to the project. The first is utilizing Stoughton's greatest natural asset, to maximize its potential. The second is to improve the city's trail system, and the third is an increase year round use of Man Park, and its ability to really host special events. So, the background of this, every five years, we're required to update our comprehensive with the recreation plan. It was called the Comprehensive Park and Open Space Plan 2014, but basically the same document. Goals and objectives are developed based on public input through surveys and public hearings for each of these plans. Then in 2018, we had over a thousand people respond to our corp survey, which really makes it reliable. So, you see the past two plans have many stated goals, but this project has, you know, everything from improving the river, the trail system, and improving the community parks, these have all been really a recurring theme between the two plans. So then there's all other plans that really have highlighted improvements in this project, and they really go back to 2005 when the railroad corridor plan was completed, and it discussed utilizing the Yahar River as a natural feature and amenity in the city. And the plan goes on about creating a riverway corridor, which provides a variety of amenities such as attractive views, open space preservation, and convenient recreation opportunities, and creating this asset for the community and its residents. Then it goes on and talking about, you know, if you do this riverway system, it's going to be reflected in increased real property values and increased marketability for the properties located along the river. And the study continues talking about developing a bike and a pedestrian corridor along the river, canoe launches, and a pedestrian bridge connecting to Man Park. So this is back in 2005. So then in 2015, there was a study done by CARPSY, and the quote, you know, it basically highlights what we're trying to do again, better connections to the river, some interviews, interviews, he has stated that they would like to see better connections between the river and the community. The downtown, the river isn't leveraged as an asset like in other communities. A riverwalk was suggested as a method to bring these people to a river and create more activity in the area. Then you continue on, 2017, the city's comprehensive plan as residents, the level of support in keeping the Yahar River clean and beautiful, which had very high support. You know, residents also responded that the most needed park and rec facilities was public river access for passive activities such as river trails or walking trails, river views, and riverside seating. So, this graphic really shows the entire project area, it's just not the Whitewater Park encompasses much more. So this project's really been split up into three different phases. This is to break it down into manageable workloads for staff and also the consultants working on it. Each phase of the improvements has a close relationship with each other. So the first phase of the improvements is the riverwalk and the RDA site along with the pedestrian bridge connecting Man Park to the RDA site. The second phase of improvements included all the in-water improvements, filling in the tail races, which will help stabilize the powerhouse and create a public area, filling in the head race, creating a viewing area for people paddling, remediation of the contaminated sediments and restoration of the mill pond will create a new public park in the city. There'll also be a trail connecting Forest Street to Water Street. There'll also be several put-ins and take-owns for canoe kayak access to all the ADA compliant. The third phase of the project includes the first phase of improvements from the Man Park Master Plan, includes the removal of the northern section of Man Parkway, naturalizing the shoreline in Man Park, and creating a pedestrian trail along with some parking improvements. So, I'll turn it over, Zach Simpson now, from Strand, and he's been working on the river trail along the RDA site.
All right, well, thanks for having us tonight. Thanks, Dan. So, on the screen here is kind of an overview of what we've been tasked with at Strand Associates. We came with a firm called Architecture to develop a concept that really kind of embraces the river from Fourth Street to Seventh Street Extended. You know, fits well with the development to the north, and then, you know, obviously we're working with REP with the Whitewater Course, but big picture, it's a concrete trail that extends from Fourth Street to Seventh Street Extended with, you know, kind of plans to maybe extend it in the future, and then a pedestrian bridge that would connect to Man Parkway, as Dan mentioned. Dan, can you, well, actually, we can talk a little bit about this. So moving from, moving from Fourth Street to the east, you'll notice there are five kind of prominent nodes along the way. Three of them are intersections, one at the top, about mid-block on what will be future River Street coming off of Fourth Street. And then, as you kind of head east, you go, you drop down into the river corridor, there's an intersection there with another future trail that would run back to the west along the river. And if you continue east, the trail meanders along the river with a node on the right or the south side, that is connected to a deflector that'll be part of the future Whitewater Course. So really, two prominent nodes that are on the riverside, and we'll talk about those in just a second. If you, if you continue heading east, you come to the bridge node, which is another intersection, and if you were to take a left, you would head up to the future development, or if you were to continue straight, you would go on to another node. So there are two river nodes, and then on the upland side or the north side of the trail, there are four kind of less prominent seating areas along the corridor. So Dan, can you pop onto the next slide? So each of these exhibits kind of shows each one of those nodes, that the top one is up by the little powerhouse, power plant, and that would be a first intersection that I mentioned, where before you drop down, parade towards the river. And that bottom, the bottom exhibit, bottom section view is at the bridge, is the pedestrian bridge that would cross Man Park. You can kind of see there, we're trying to incorporate some natural vegetation, natural stone, kind of stepstone, provide access to the river for fishing or paddling or just hanging out. And again, it's kind of concrete trail, I'll talk in a minute about some of the other improvements that we're looking at with lighting and benches and so forth. You go to the next one, Dan? So there's just two more sections, both nodes that I mentioned on the riverside, so trying to create some separate space off the trail where folks might hang out, and just watch the river, or again, you know, have access to the river with the stepped terrace, natural walls, some other amenities like benches, and maybe some more artistic type seating arrangements with timbers might work well here, too. The next one, Dan? So these are the blowups of those areas that I just kind of showed section views for. The one on the left is the intersection up at what will be River Street. The one on the right is further down, where there's going to be a future connection to the, both the north and to the west. And you can kind of see we're showing some different materials there, I'll talk about that in a second, too. Why don't you jump to the next one, Dan? So these are the actual, the more prominent nodes. The one on the left is at that deflector as part of the Whitewater Course, and you can see, there's a sidewalk that kind of separates itself from the main trail, and then there's a little seating area that's, you know, it's kind of a little private area, ADA accessible with benches, and then steps, terrace, natural stone down to the water. The upper right is the node at the bridge, kind of taking the same materials and arrangement to that location, again, with a couple different materials, colored concrete, pavers, steps, terrace, natural stone down to the water, and then the bottom one is just kind of the same thing, but without the deflector, so that would be the node to the east of the bridge. And I think the last slide kind of shows some of the materials and amenities that we're thinking, and this is more or less, kind of a lot going on on the sheet, but from a material standpoint, we're thinking, you know, a concrete trail with more natural colors to kind of play off both a natural setting, but also, you know, the redevelopment with Xixi City Brick and some of those types of things. In the upper right, we're showing some plantings, natural, definitely natural native grasses along the river, some smaller trees and clusters, and you might have noticed that on the previous slides, those nodes kind of had clustered trees in them, so not trying to block the view from the development, but trying to provide a little bit of shade and privacy in some of those node areas. The benches and some of the other features like the lighting and maybe some more aesthetic features that might more or less pay tribute to kind of the lumber milling heritage along the river are shown in the bottom right, where we're looking at light poles that may be timber, but still with kind of the industrial black light fixture at the top, and then same for the benches, they would be, you know, kind of square industrial looking, likely black, and then Dan has plans to use lumber from around the community to finish, finish the benches. So, is there another slide, Dan?
That was that for you.
That's it, so, yeah, that's kind of a quick overview of what this first phase, you know, is looking like, and, you know, we've been working through these details with both city staff and the RDA and REP, and this is basically where we've landed. Are you going to talk about kind of the overall schedule later on, Dan, or do you want me to touch on that now?
Briefly, but if you have more detail than I do, so if you want to talk about it, you can.
Well, I think I just, it's worth mentioning that, you know, I guess where we're at right now is, you know, we're working toward submitting permits to DNR, advancing the design to that level, and then later this month and early March, we'll be working towards getting this out to bid, so this first phase is going to come together pretty quick here, is our hope, so, you know, that's really all I wanted to mention with the schedule. So Dan, I think you can turn it over to me, I think he's next on the agenda here.
Yep, so the next few slides are going to cover the second phase of the project, when really, we're going to cover what is the Whitewater Park in these next few slides, and Mason Lacy's Recreation Engineering and Planning provided these, and we can discuss probably relevant, compared to what will be.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Thanks, Dan. Yeah, this is Mason Lacy, I'm a professional engineer with Recreation Engineering and Planning, and we've been working on the design for the river improvements portion of the project, Whitewater Park, you know, we've been working closely with Zach and others at Strand and Dan at the city, when, you know, most recently, been really working on the, you know, the design of downstream of Fourth Street portion of the Whitewater Parks, we're trying to get those plans submitted for permitting, along with Strand's design. But so, my first one, just go over, just kind of Whitewater Parks in general, just kind of give everybody an idea of some of the other projects we've designed. So we put together a couple before and after photos of our projects, and these before and after photos are focused on projects we've completed at existing dams. So this is the dam in Manchester, that was the side of our project, and it was, it was, you know, extremely dangerous, and eyesore, and then Dan, if you can go to the next, next slide. So this is, this is the project after construction, and, you know, the goal of these Whitewater Parks is, you know, yes, you provide a space for active river recreation, for kayakers, for surfers, but you're also just drawing community, drawing the community into the river, really facing, turning the community back towards the river, and taking these public safety hazards, and turning them into, you know, really a highlight of the area, drawing visitors, and, you know, a lot of times, you know, some of the biggest users of our parks are just kids swimming and tubers, and there was one study done that over 90% of visitors to Whitewater Parks don't even get in the water, mainly just want to come by and check out what's going on, and sit by the river, and really provides a lot to the whole, to the whole community. So this is Manchester, and if you switch to the next one, Dan, we got a number of these before and after photos. This is, this is a dam in San Marcos, Texas, the Rio Vista Dam, it was failing structurally, they were going to rebuild it, and then they decided they wanted to create a asset for the community. If you go to the next slide. These are some photos afterward, they took that, the drop of the San Marcos River there, and created three drop structures out of natural limestone in the area, and it's really become an extremely popular park and centerpiece for the community. Going to the next one. So this is Pueblo, Colorado. It was a pretty large dam, and it's complete barrier of fish passage, and go to the after photos. So this is after construction, it got, you know, we took the drop and broke it out over nine drops on this one, providing fish passage over the dam, as well as recreation, and for surfers, kayakers, and they have, you know, annual river festival. Under the next, Dan? And this is in Dayton, Ohio, this is a dam that was extremely dangerous, this is a low head dam where a reverse roller forms, so in that, where you can see where that log is recirculating, a number of people drowned in the dam prior construction, then go to after photos, you know, eliminated that public safety hazard at the dam, and it's really become a, you know, a destination, and there's been a number of, there's a surf company that opened up that teaches courses, and this is a regional draw. And onto the next. So this is in Reno, Nevada, this is what it looked like before, is this dam, is also the river was completely channelized, and you go to the after photo. This is, you know, so they created, it's kind of similar to Stoughton, there's a, there's a main channel, and there's a side channel that is a little easier for tubers and other users, but it's really become, it's right in downtown Reno, it's really become a big, you know, big, big draw, and they've got an island with the outdoor amphitheater that they throw, they have big festivals at, and there's a big annual river festival where they get thousands of people down at the river, and, you know, it's a big, it's a large draw for kayakers and paddlers, but also just for people, you know, and just walking by and want to check out the scene, and it's really created a, you know, since the completion of the project, there's been all these restaurants opening up, you know, facing the river, an area that was, you know, kind of neglected beforehand. I can flip through a few more here. Next one, this is Springfield, Ohio, before, what the dam looked like, go to after. And again, this is another, another dam that, that returned into several drops with natural stone, Whitewater Park, and do the next one. This is in Charles City, again, this is another really extremely dangerous low head dam with that reverse roller, and then go to the after photos. You know, this is, this is what it looks like afterward, and it's, you know, become a, there's a surf wave that people surf on, and it just really tied the community back to their river here, and now, you know, kids are jumping in the river and swimming rather than being afraid of being caught in the killer dam. And then I think we got the last one here, this is a dam in Boulder, Colorado, on Boulder Creek, and go to the after photos, this was, you know, more of an example of the, you know, new trail and pedestrian bridge and river improvements that really, really improved that from prior, so that's, that's an overview of just some examples of dam modification projects we've done, really turning these, these old dams that communities are trying to, you know, revitalize the area and create a, create an asset, and then, you know, obviously we've got a lot of other projects where it's not on an existing dam, such as Slade o' Clock, Colorado, or PT will speak to a little bit about that, so. That's it.
All right, thanks. So this is just, I include this slide, this is an overview of the current design where we're at, and these are really some character images for paddling improvements, the bottom bypass channel that pictures from Argo Cascades in Ever, Michigan, the surfing wave, I believe that's Boise, Idaho, and then downstream of Fourth Street Bridge, where there's the two drops, those pictures are from Manchester. So then the other improvements for the second phase include the naturalization and trail from Fourth Street to Water Street, those current deflectors that were previously mentioned, that's where the person at the bottom center almost picture is fishing, you know, they create an Eddie, or fishing, like the, you know, attack, and then those and stuff, so that's where a good fishing spot would be. Then also stabilizing the powerhouse and creating plazas and the head race and tail race areas. And then the lowering the water, it would expose approximately four acres of sediment, and the sediment would be remediated and land would be restored. The city attorney has looked at this, and they concluded that the city would own the property that's exposed in the mill pond, and it would be mostly converted over to parkland, and I believe that picture is from West Bend or Merrill, and they both built dams where the water was lowered and creating new parks. Then the third phase of improvements are, they really incorporate the first phase of the Man Park Master Plan, except for the pedestrian bridge where that got moved into the first phase of this project. Improvements including removing the northern section of Man Parkway, replacing that with the pedestrian trail, and naturalizing the shoreline, improving that central corridor by the man center, replacing the baseball diamond with additional parking, there'd be some fishing nodes along the trail, a new entry sign into the park, and then the top left corner of the northwest section of the park, there'd be a shelter and drop-off area for people that wanted to use the Whitewater Park. So here are some of the character images from the master plan of the improvements. So let's hear some of the character images from the master plan of improvements. So this is an opportunity for a city council to ask questions from Zach or Mason or myself.
I have a question, Dan.
Okay.
Okay, so I have San Marcos, Pueblo, Reno, Dayton, Charles City, Boulder, and I may have missed one. I'm especially concerned, extremely concerned about contaminants. And the question goes to these other parks that you had mentioned, Zach, and that those are, those are all parks on rivers. Were they were White Water Parks built on on this, on these, in these sites in areas where there was heavy industrialization such as mill fab and which wishes now closed down, of course, and and our Uniroil company. Were, did we have any similarities with the kind of industry that we have here in Stoughton that existed in these areas like such as mill fab and Uniroil?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Thank you and you know, yeah, we've, we've built a lot of these projects and, you know, they're all, you know, most of these projects are in these degraded urban areas and we've got, you know, we have one project that's currently under construction in Lake Station, Indiana, which is right, right next to Gary, Indiana and there's a, I mean, it's, I didn't, it's kind of a whole nother level of of industry that I've ever seen with the the amounts of, you know, the steel, the steel industry there and but long story short, the the benefit of building these projects on a river is the water is 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 flowing and moving downstream and that is a huge benefit over, you know, anything where it's, you know, if sitting water or so it's, it's constantly flushing. So actually, being in the water, you know, you're not, you don't want to, you're not going to, just like any river, you wouldn't drink, drink it, but generally, you know, floating on the rot waters is 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 great and that's, you know, like in Lake Station, there's that project, the, you know, and there's always a, there's a variation of water quality on these projects, like those photos from San Marcos, that's a, you know, a crystal clear spring fed river that you probably could drink the water out of.
But I understand that, but you you only answered part of my question. Do we have any similarities with major industries like mill fab and and Uniroil on these particular sites? In Dayton, Ohio, and in Texas and Pueblo and anything similar to our area?
Well, I said, we'll have a sediment experts on in the next section, I believe. And they might be better suited to answer your questions about contamination and things like that.
Okay, we'll move on. I would like an answer to that question.
I have a question. Could you give an idea of for climate similar to ours, what kind of yearly year round usage these get? Or seasonal usage? And then also, could you explain the different, the difference between the kind of wave that the dam creates with the the rollers you were talking about and a surf wave? For people who aren't familiar with hydraulic things?
Yes, definitely. So first on 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 use, you know, I think, you know, again, there's this, one study was done about usage of White Water Parks and the number one determinant is air temperature, you know, in the, in the heat of the summer, you have the most the most users getting in the water, but it really, it really, I think it's more the the so in the heat of the summer, you get the most users and you also get the most, but like in the late summer, you have the lowest water flow. So that's where you're going to have a lot more families and kids swimming and tubing, things like that. And then in the spring or, you know, in the early spring, late winter, when you have higher water flows, but it's colder, you're probably going to have more people that are, you know, kayakers or surfers that have specific gear like wetsuits or dry suits to to deal with that gear. So obviously it's going to be highest use in the summer, lower in the winter. But, you know, some, some people will still come out and 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 paddle in the cold, cold weather if there's a there's if there's flow, if there's water. So that was the first question and might have to remind me again on that second question. Go that the hydraulics on the reverse roller. So, so yeah, the, you know, it's these low head dams, you know, this is a little different from from the dam in Stoughton. The dam in Stoughton, you've got the water flowing underneath the tanner gates. It's kind of a primary hazard, but those low head dams, you've got water pouring off in the steep, you know, vertical orientation in this, in this, and the thing is you've got this really uniform crest and there's some videos you can watch where, you know, someone can can get, can get stuck in there and that's one of the primary reasons these projects get built and that is 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 these drownings. And so, you know, we've, we've dealt with this on almost all of our projects where public safety is, you know, the number one concern here and, you know, all these projects are built to be safe and have kids swimming through them and tubing and and it's, it's, you know, won't get too into the hydraulics of the of the difference between like Rock Rapids and a jet of flow coming off more horizontally and the depth of the pool, but we design and be very very safe.
Thank you, Mason. Does, I mean, because we want to keep this going, but does anybody else have a a pressing question? We're going to get to sediment, we're going to get to the hydrology, so specific questions with respect to either, you know, what Strand had presented on the trails or you know, what Mason presented just on these White Water Parks. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a comment.
No, this, this is only for city council, I'm sorry. Public, if you have a question, please write it into your chat. And then we'll answer it either at the end of, if we have time at the end of tonight's presentation or Dan and I will create a frequently asked question page. This is really open for just the city council to ask questions. So with that said, any other city council member have any questions? Hearing none? Dan, let's move on.
Okay, so the next section of the presentation is what's going to cover the project history and the timeline. So this project started with a citizen who came to our office of Parks and Rec and she talked to me and the former director, knowing that we were trying to improve recreational use of the river. So, you know, she had visited Iowa White Water Parks and she told us to check these out. So we just did our due diligence and researched over the next thirteen months and answered questions like, you know, is this feasible and and not just the, the Yarri River here in Stoughton, where can you actually do it in Wisconsin? There's not another project like that here. What are the benefits? You know, what, what do these things cost? Can this be done? You know, financially by the city? What is the current and future market for something like this? And, you know, what does the competition look like as far as White Water Parks goes? There is something that they're all over the place. So, you know, we did things like read multiple economic impact reports. Looked at financials from Ann Arbor Parks and Recreation, who has a established White Water Park. Talked with different engineering firms that create White Water Parks. Talked to different Parks and Rec directors from throughout the country and their staff. And also project managers from Iowa and Colorado and we also talked to community leaders. Then in January two thousand and eighteen, I met with the Secretary Deputy and Waterways Director from the DNR to see if it was feasible in the state and they really liked the idea. And some other things, you know, we brought outdoor industry association topline reports that cover recreation trends. You know, the SCORP, which is a statewide comprehensive water recreation plan that examines trends regionally and statewide and the recreational improvements in high growth areas. So the next slide is a, is a graphic from the statewide SCORP. And you can see Stone is located in the southern Gateways region of the state. I circled that section. And you can see that canoeing kayaking has seen a strong increase in participation, same with hiking, biking, these areas. And those are all the improvements that are included in this project. So this is a listing of the studies that plans have been completed to date. The next section will go over them in more detail. But in May two thousand and eighteen, we completed the concept plan for the White Water Park. And then there was economic impact analysis that was completed by UW. In July of two thousand and nineteen, sediment sampling was completed by Interflue in October two thousand and nineteen and then a year ago from almost today, the preliminary plan and hydraulic analysis for the White Water Park was completed. And then last June, the Man Park Master Plan was adopted by the city council. So if you have some questions about this, you know, you can ask them now or you can wait to the end.
Does anybody have any, any council member have any questions on the timeline or what Dan just presented? That has to do with the timeline specifically for this section? Hearing none? Dan, move on.
Okay, so the next section is a review of the studies. First up is Nick Jordan and Marty Meltzer from Interflue who completed the sediment assessment of the Stone Dam. So I'll turn it over to them. I know I saw Nick on here earlier.
Thanks, Dan. This is Nick Jordan with Interflue. And as Dan mentioned, I'll be discussing kind of our methods and findings for the the sediment assessment we conducted at the Stoughton Dam's impoundment. And so, so this study was conducted in the spring, summer and fall of twenty nineteen. And really it's an initial assessment which sought to identify the quantity of impounded sediment in the impoundment and also to assess sediment quality via lab analyses. Next slide, please. So the first, the first piece of this assessment is really to identify the the amount of sediment that's in the impoundment. And in order to do this, we conducted a bathometric survey of the impoundment. So we, we essentially used sonar and and RTK GPS to to map the top of the of the of the bed. Then we also used what what is called the depth refusal probing technique to identify where the bottom of the impounded sediment is. And the reason why that, why that's important is that there's, you know, a relics channel and floodplain surface below the impounded sediments and it's important to know from, from a geomorphic perspective where, where those boundaries are and it helps you then, you know, understand the the thickness of the sediment that's impounded. And and just a point of clarification here, when I'm speaking of sediment, speaking of fine grain material and that's really important because the fine grain material is what contaminants sort to and and deposit. Sand and gravel and cobble and coarse grain materials, you know, just typically don't absorb contaminants and so they're, they're of less concern. So by comparing the two surfaces that we mapped, we were able to find that there's about forty seven thousand cubic yards of sediment in the impounded area between the, roughly between the dam and the footbridge, which is the project area that Dan showed early in the presentation. And then within the area that's, that's really what what I'll refer to as a main sediment deposit. And that's kind of area that's in the, on the north side of the impoundment. It's, it's in the yellows and oranges and greens on this heat map. You know, that that area has about thirty five thousand cubic yards of sediment in it. In the main channel, which kind of runs along the south side of the impoundment, where where the water is deepest and the most conveyance happens, there's very little impounded sediment, but within the area that's, you know, here mostly green, orange, yellow, that that depth is about one to nine feet thick. The dam itself is, it has a hydraulic type of nine feet or so, so that, you know, it's a good gut check on on the maximum permissible thickness of that, of that layer. But next slide, please. So before we went out and did any fieldwork, a really important step was to review the watershed and land uses and past contamination in the watershed to identify potential contaminants that we should be testing for. So we focused our potential contaminant review rather than in the entire Yarri watershed, which stretches out through Madison into Southern Columbia County. We focused on the area between Lake Gonsa and Stoughton Dam within the watershed. And the reason being that, you know, sediments high up in the watershed most likely deposit within the chain of lakes or or tributaries. And and, you know, are not, are not likely to contribute significantly to the impounded sediments here. And so to do this, we use the Wisconsin Bureau of Remediation and Redevelopment Tracking System, which is a publicly available online database that tracks sites that have had contamination issues in the past and the cleanup progress that's gone on. So, so as part of our due diligence review, we went through that database, identified sites and the contaminants that may have originated from those sites. And so, you know, in general, we found metals, EPA priority pollutant metals, petroleum and diesel derivatives, coordinated hydrocarbons, VOCs, which are volatile organic compounds, pHs, PCs, PCBs. Those are all pretty typical of, you know, industrialized urban areas. There's nothing there that you know, would would is unexpected for for an urbanized watershed. We also included insecticides and pesticides in that review because of the agricultural characteristics of the watershed. Again, these are all potential contaminants that we identified in our review. The DNR, we we met with them and got their concurrence on our sampling plan. And we'll go on to discuss that. Next slide, please. So again, we we kind of prepared this plan for DNR concurrence before going out to sample the sediments. And in the end, you know, we sampled kind of across the impoundment, eleven total samples. One of those samples was an upstream control sample, not in that main impoundment body. One of the samples was of the, I say stratified here, but it was of the the relic floodplain surface below the impounded sediments, which is more of a topsoil characteristic rather than a, excuse me, rather than a loose sediment character to it. And there was one replicate sample, just a duplicate sample. And so these samples were what we call pooled and so they were basically combined top to bottom through the through, through the column of sediment that was sampled. And you can see this photo of our chlorine device in which we push down into the muck and then obtain samples from that. So we we sent these samples, you know, after collecting them, sent them to a lab and we tested for those compounds I mentioned. Previously, the EPA priority pollutants metals, the organic compounds, meaning the diesel and petroleum compounds. The organic compounds, meaning the diesel and petroleum compounds, the. You know, PCBs, pHs, VOCs, that sort of thing. Nutrients, so nitrogen phosphorus. And then the physical properties. So, you know, what is the grain size distribution of these samples? Next slide, please. So the next, I believe, four slides discuss the results of the sediment sampling. I've, the, the results in their raw form are spreadsheets that are, you know, extensive. There are. Many, many dozens, if not hundreds of compounds that were sampled for. And, and, you know, those spreadsheets provide really detailed breakdowns of results. I'm trying to keep them into a digestible format here. And hopefully I succeeded in doing that. But, you know, to simplify things, we compared these, the sediment results. To two main benchmarks, which, which the DNR. Uses. And the first one is the consensus based sediment quality guidelines from. A number of researchers in the past. And they really assess the toxicity of contaminants to benthic macroinvertebrates, which. To translate into English for you, benthic means at the bottom of a water body. So. You know, in the much, essentially in the soil. And macroinvertebrates, you know, just means little bugs and critters and, and. You know, species that like to live in, in, in the, in the bottom streams and lakes. And so on the left-hand side, we'll see the kind of categories for those different. Those, those different thresholds that are, that are defined by this consensus based sediment quality guidelines. And those include the threshold effects, which. The concentration of a particular contaminant. Is unlikely to cause. A negative effect to a, again, benthic organism. Then there, on the, on the high side, the high threshold is the probable effect, effects concentration. It's upper bound. It's where effects are likely to occur to these critters. And the purple box is the midpoint effects. And that's simply the average between the low and the high. That's kind of give you, gives, it gives a sense of, of where things fall within that. Within that range. For the screening guideline. Now, the second guideline that we compared against is the Wisconsin NR 720 residual contaminant levels. Which are, you know, essentially parameters that. Are calculated to provide an assessment of the risks to human health. Excuse me. And we use two in consultation with. The, the great folks at the DNR, we use two of these RCLs. First one being the soil to groundwater RCL. Which is again, it's, it's a, it's a threshold, which when exceeded, you know, basically flags that substance. The second one is the non-industrial direct contact RCL. That's in the blue box on the far right. And that, that threshold is. You know, a little more relevant perhaps to an everyday understanding, you know, this threshold is. What's been determined through the scientific literature to, you know, have, have some impact to human health potentially in a direct contact. So if you're directly handling sediment. In a non-industrial setting. So I'll be going through these slides. And you'll notice that. Some of, there are a couple repeats, not on this slide, but there are a couple of repeats. As I've grouped these geographically with respect to the, the main. Area that's being sampled. And since there are multiple samples in those areas, you know, you might see, for example. Arsenic pop up in the threshold effects and also in the midpoint effects. And that just means that. Different samples. Returned, you know, slightly different results. Within, within that group setting. So the upstream control sample, you know, we, we had arsenic. Reached the threshold of X concentration, lead triggered the green box, the soil to groundwater. RCL. And then arsenic thallium and five different pH compounds. Raised flags on that non-industrial direct contact. Next slide, please. Within the main sediment deposit, which again is that the area that's primarily. On the heat map that I was showing earlier, the thickness, that's primarily the greens and oranges area. We had some metals flag the threshold of X concentration, copper, lead, mercury, zinc. The midpoints of X concentration. Lead and mercury, again, different, different samples flagged. So there are different concentrations there. So the groundwater RCL, lead, nickel, mercury. And then the non-industrial direct contact RCL arsenic thallium, exfoliant chromium. Four different pH compounds. And then a insecticide called Alpha BHC. Next slide, please. The other kind of partitioned area is along the left bank of the impoundment. And that's, that's looking downstream. So that's the, the north. Right along the north bank of the impoundment. And here, the, again, threshold effects concentration was flagged for copper, lead, mercury, zinc. Lead reached that midpoint effect of concentration at one sample. Then at a separate sample. Flagged for the probable effects concentration along with arsenic. Again, lead, nickel, selenium, mercury for soil to groundwater. And then for the non-industrial direct contact RCL, we had arsenic thallium, exfoliant chromium. Three different pH compounds and that same insecticide Alpha BHC. Next slide, please. Finally. The relic floodplain surface, which is what we're, what we're terming. You know, the, the soil surface on the, you know, for the, for the. All intents purposes on the, on the north side of the impoundment. Where there's, you know, more of a topsoil texture to the soil as opposed to the looser impounded sediments that we found. And this is a surface that was, you know, likely in place before the dam was built. So it kind of gives an indication of, of what. What is, what is. The difference between contamination within the impoundment sediments and then it within that, the upper stratum of that floodplain surface. With the understanding that, you know, some leaching may have taken place over the. Over the decades. So arsenic flagged that threshold X concentration. Zinc was in the midpoint. And then in the not direct contact RCL, a separate insecticide, heptic chloroepoxide. Was found in excess of that RCL. So. I believe, I believe that's. All for me. Dan, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, so next up is Jim Killian from Wisconsin DNR. He's a water management specialist who. Reviews the sediment plans every day and then I talk about the sediment and also restoration of the project.
Thanks, Dan. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Well, I do other things too during my day, Dan. Yeah, I'm Jim Killian. I'm a sediment and water quality specialist for DNR's Environmental Management Division. I'm out of the Madison office. But my responsibilities are statewide. I'll. I guess I'd like to shed some additional light on what you saw on these previous slides. What does it really mean in terms of risk? Risk to aquatic animals, risk to people? The contaminants found in the Stoughton Mill Pond are exactly what we've come to expect from impoundments located in. In small towns across the state. While some of the concentration. Levels are elevated, I'm putting elevated in air quotes. They're elevated compared to what would be found in, say, an undeveloped environment. There's nothing here screaming at dangerous levels. Furthermore, there's nothing pointing to a specific smoking gun of causation. Because these contaminants derive from historic uses in the area, we refer to them as legacy pollutants. I'll, I'll give some examples. The, the arsenic values that you saw showing up on the earlier charts at those threshold concentrations of potentially. Toxic to benthic organisms. Those arsenic levels hover really just above background concentrations that are found naturally. In the state. It derives from. Dissolution of sulfide minerals in, in sedimentary rock. So when we see arsenic. You know, levels like this. Really, it. They're, they're, you know, they're elevated, but it's not high enough to cause lethality to aquatic organisms on the riverbed. It's, this arsenic is actually indicative of past herbicide treatment in the mill pond. It was common in the 40s and 50s to use arsenical based herbicides to kill aquatic plants. Everybody wanted to. You know, see the bottom of the lake. Thankfully, we've kind of learned from our past history of doing that. So we find similar arsenic numbers in lakes all over the state, including the Madison Lakes. The, the heavy metals that show up in the samples, the zinc, copper, the lead, the nickel. Those, those are common footprints that indicate foundry operations. So even without me knowing the exact history of past industries along the shore of the pond. I, I could wager that some foundry work was a part of the local industry. Now, I don't suspect it was high-end foundry work that involved metal plating, for instance, because. In those cases, we see chromium and zinc numbers really through the roof. And that's not the case here. Lead, right? We all hear about lead being a big environmental contaminant. Yeah, I'm guessing lead was also from those earlier industrial labors, foundry labors. But lead, I will tell you, always, well, almost always shows up in mill ponds and impoundments. Does anybody want to guess why? You can shout it out. You know, these ponds have been here for. That's a lot of kids fishing with lead weights, right? We get a lot of lead detections from, from lead sinkers. So. Nick mentioned PHs, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. That's a big word. It's, these are organic. Carcinogens. They, they derive from the combustion of fossil fuels, okay? Now, that sounds pretty scary, but when I cook a steak on my Weber charcoal grill. I consume measurable amounts of pHs along with that meat. So the particulates that come out of your car's exhaust or the nearby chimneys this time of year. They get knocked out of the air during rain. And that water makes its way to the surface water of the rivers and ponds. Those particulates sink to the bottom and they, you know, that's our accumulation of pH. Concentrations there. Now, there are situations of direct discharges of pHs to the environment. Old coal gasification plants, for example, with tar waste discharges. But that's not what we're seeing here. We're seeing just incredibly low numbers. So let's talk about the risk to people. When a dam is removed or modified and causes a drop in the impoundment water level, land. Of the former pond becomes emerged, essentially as mud flats. And Nick pointed that out in a sampling on the north side. Of the impoundment where, where originally, historically, that was a soil surface that was covered by sediment. So, so now that, that land has become emerged. The, the risk avenue has changed, right? It's no, it's no longer bugs crawling around on the bottom. It's potentially kids playing frisbee or people walking on, on the land if that becomes a park space, right? So. So the acceptable contaminant risk levels change. And Nick pointed to that in those charts. Those were the tables he was. Referring to the RCL's residual contaminant levels for, for contact and ingestion. So that's the difference. People eating dirt is different than bugs living in mud, right? So, so the other big scary word thrown around often is remediation. Will, will these findings require? Remediation? Will the DNR require remediation of, of this sediment, these emerged soils? The, the answer is yes, but not through an enforcement action, right? Like, we're not kicking down anybody's doors and shutting down factories, okay? Rather, the, you know, our. Prescriptive letter to the city basically says that. The remediation should be incorporated. As part of the bank restoration or any kind of pre-construction activities. Acceptable actions can be anything. Anything that sequesters the surface of those soils and prevents it from being, being accessible by people. For instance. A six inch covering of clean topsoil, planting natural seed. That would serve to control those risks. So, you know, in summary. The, the study done by Interflue was, was, was pretty conclusive that while there are. Contaminants found in the sediment of this pond, they, they do not really elevate to the level of concern. To, to, to severe environmental or human health risk. And that's all I got.
Jim, and I know, Dan, before we move on, I think because we had so much to go through with respect to what Jim had just said. And what Nick Jordan just talked about with Interflue, I kind of, before we move on to Mason's next. Section, I kind of want to know if there's any questions from any council member. Just on what you just heard with respect to the sediment sampling and what Jim Killian just talked about. Okay.
I do have another, if I could.
Does it relate to what we just heard?
Certainly does. Yeah. So the, the sampling, as I understand it, was done at different levels. Some were deep samples. Some were pretty shallow samples by the footbridge were probably pretty, you didn't go very deep on that. What would be the reason why you wouldn't do a sample? Why, why there's different levels of deepness to the borings that you do?
Sure. So to answer that question, you know, one of the reasons why we did. Essentially integrate our samples with depth. Is that. One, for, for cost measures, fewer samples, fewer laboratory tests. And two, it's, this was intended kind of as an initial. You know, assessment if there's need to sample again, you know, but we can, we can definitely get that. But these. These death integrated samples are intended to kind of get the bulk. Properties of the material, you know, through that, through that thickness of the, of the impoundment sediment. So, and then, you know, that's.
Well, the basic, the basic question is, is this, is this river a good place to swim? Canoe, kayak, get into the water at, at this point? Is it, is it safe?
You know, I think I'll leave that to Jim here.
Sure. I, I mean. I've said this in similar situations, similar groups, the biggest. Risk, health risk to any user. risk, health risk to any user of this part of the Yarra River is drowning. There's these minor contaminants that are here. They, they cling to the fine particles on the sediment. They don't dissolute into the water column. So you're not going to be, you know, you're not going to be getting exposed to lead if you take a mouthful of, of water here. There's, you know, there's agricultural nutrients in water. You know, the phosphorus, nitrogen, that kind of stuff, that can often lead to plant growth, algal blooms. But you know, spend, spend any time at the dog park on Highway N on a hot summer day. And I'm actually one of those people that is waist deep in the water on the north beach. Cause it's a pretty decent area to, to enjoy the, the river.
And I have just one follow up question. What is a PFAS? And have, have that, have they been found in Lake Agonza in the Yarra River?
PFAS has been found throughout the entire chain of Madison Lakes, including the Yarra River. Mostly the, the higher concentrations are south of Starkweather Creek, where it enters Lake Manona. But concentrations have been found in Mendota as well. There is currently a fish consumption advisory listed for both PCBs and PFAS for Lake Manona. That's the only water body I know of right now in the state. And I, I can, I can, you know, that's a very, that's what we call a emerging contaminant of concern, PFAS, right? So the answer to your question is yes, it's in the Madison Lakes. Yes, it's in the Yarra River. And it's in the blood of everybody on this phone call, regardless of your age and your weight, your ethnicity. You currently have PFAS in your blood, so.
As I understand it, they're called forever chemicals, which do cause cancer. They are clearly harmful for children and especially fetuses and reduce potentially the effectiveness of vaccines. Is that correct?
I think there's a lot of knowns and unknowns with PFAS right now. A lot of research in that area, even in the state. The, everything I've seen that, where there are measurable effects. Endocrine disruption, for instance, like PCB effects. It's, it's, it's in those areas where essentially the PFAS is coming right out of the pipe. You know, the industries that, that make the product. You know, as far as its effects in the environment on people, whether it's through consumption of wildlife or fish or drinking water, that there's, there's still a lot of unknowns there.
And were they tested for this area?
PFAS and PFOA were tested, where, you mean, if we're, they were tested in all the lakes.
Wasn't our analysis, wasn't our analysis in this last test for this area for the whitewater park?
Oh, was PFAS tested in the water and sediments? I don't believe so. Nick will answer that.
No, it was not, no.
Why not?
I'm guessing because at the time, when the sampling was done a couple of years ago, the state had no prescribed and accepted method of testing for PFAS. You're testing something that is so shows up in such minute amounts that it, it's quite an effort to, to sample for it. Let me give you an example. Oftentimes when it's tested in water columns, it has to be done by people who haven't used dental floss or deodorant or washed their clothes in a week because the PFAS can be detected from all those things, essentially breathing on the water sample. So it's, it's, it's a difficult test to run. And it's only recently that the department has established acceptable means of testing for it.
Thank you.
Do I have any other questions?
I'd like to ask a question, Regina.
Yes.
And basically, I guess, Jim, if, if you could kind of just maybe rate what the quality of the water is right now versus what it'll be under the proposed plan?
Sure. And I think you guys had biologists from the university giving a talk a couple of weeks ago. But I'll, I'll just second a lot of what you hear. Anytime you have natural running water, right? You're, you're aerating the water more, you're bringing in oxygen, you're moving the material. Nutrients that are in the sediment are, are being transposed downstream. They give better quality of life to, to the benthic organisms, which brings in better feeding fish. You have migratory fish that are able to actually move against the current, move upstream for, for spawning and better habitat in the gravels, like Nick mentioned. You have less algal plant blooms because with moving water, there's less stagnation and less temperature rise. So, you know, during the summer. So you have, you know, you tend to have healthier aquatic environments when you have non-ponded water.
Thank you, Jim. Fred, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I did. This is for Nick, I think. I was thinking that the, the study you have done on, I think, page 16 said that the 47,000 cubic yards of muck may need to be actively managed, which means it may possibly need some removal. And that if all of it got removed, it would cost $4,700,000. So I'm wondering, is there some manner in which we can determine whether or not all of that muck will be able to be remediated by covering it? Or will we be, I guess, to get to the point, would an environmental impact study help us determine, does some of this need to be removed? And then kind of a little ancillary item, how much of that do you think will get flushed down river if we took the dam out?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Thank you for that. I'll say regarding the environmental impact study, I guess I can't answer that right off the bat, so I'll have to apologize for that straight away. But regarding your question about the, the active management discussion in the report, you know, essentially in the report, we, at, at the time of writing, we didn't, we, we didn't have necessarily a clear idea of exactly what the, what the geometry of this, this proposed operation to the dam, if any, would look like. And, and so, you know, that has a pretty strong effect on, on what potential fate sediments are. And so in the report, we, we provided a little kind of brief overview discussion of what are the differences between active and passive? You know, with, with the understanding that there are a lot of steps that, that need to happen between the, you know, the initial assessment and, and a completed project. So with Jim, I guess, to, just for everyone's benefit here, you know, passive management basically refers to letting the river do the work, moving sediment downstream when, when a dam is removed or altered. The active management refers to, you know, taking an active step to, to address the sediment concerns, you know, whether it's from impacting spawning habitat downstream or, or causing a slightly deposition to, you know, contamination concerns. And, and so Jim mentioned, you know, that, that fans, the, the D N R had submitted a letter to the city with some specific measures that they would find acceptable in this case. And, and, you know, I would say, at least from, from my perspective, there's no, no firm design in place at this point. But, you know, so, so regarding that cost range for for, for sediment disposal, you know, that again, in, in kind of the early, the early stages of, of thinking about what would need to happen here, that, that four million, I believe it was 4.7 million figure comes from, you know, that, that would be a worst case scenario where, you know, much if not all of that sediment would need to be hauled out and, and that gets expressed.
Yeah, certainly not expecting that. Passive management, controlled drawdown. You can, you control the drawdown of the dam, you control the release of sediment. You allow natural midpoint recession as that sediment solidifies. And it's actually beneficial to downstream of the dam to actually have, you know, some of that trans-sediment translocated, you know, as, like I said, as it is, carrying nutrients. And kind of reestablish what is often starved locations downstream. Yeah, I, I think this project could be done without that kind of.
And one, one follow up, if I could, Jim. What, what was, what was the testing east and south of the dam? What's kind of testing you do there?
East and south of the dam. So, so downstream. Yep. So, so downstream, you know, we, we didn't find any deposits that were basically, you know, we, we extract samples from. And so, you know, that, like I said, there, there's certainly a possibility going forward that, you know, additional samples could be obtained if, if necessary.
That's where the Milfabe area was, right?
I'm not, I'm not sure exactly on the particulars of Milfabe. If, if it's downstream of the dam, there'd be less of a risk that, that, you know, contaminants entered the, the upstream impoundment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other council member have a question at this point? If not, thank you, Jim and Nick. Your presentations were great. I think it answered a lot of questions that were in the chat. So I thank you for that. So Dan, I think we can move forward.
Okay. So our next slide, this is about their economic impact analysis that was completed by the University of Wisconsin for us. And it was completed in 2018 by Dave Markelier, who was a professor in the UW Landscape Architecture Department. And this is a specialty is doing economic impact on recreational tourism. And this plan was really like based on a concept plan that had less recreational draws than our current design. And the highlights include, it's a conservative estimate that there are at least 30,000 kayakers within a 30 minute drive to Stoughton and 82,000 within a 60 minute drive. And within three hours of Stoughton, there's a population of nearly 6 million and estimated 434,000 kayakers and over 1 million community users. So to do a study, they looked at 10 other whitewater parks across the United States and they found that kayakers spent on average over $60 per day on the recreational pursuits. So they spend money on things like food, lodging, automotive, recreational equipment, clothing and supplies. So the report goes on and it talks about the park is expected to initially draw kayakers and kinniers. Then with a continual site improvements and marketing, this is anticipated to grow like, in a like fashion to other comparable whitewater parks to attract increasingly large visitor numbers from further reaches of its market boundaries. So what that really means is that, you know, we're going to start off locally with those people in that 30 minute drive time. And then it's going to transition to that 60 minute and 120 minute drive times once the load gets sold. So the study also states that there'll be a premium placed on real estate values within the project area. And then increased property values will provide capital appreciation for owners of land in Stoughton. So this, this chart, you know, it basically says the breakdown of what people spend when they come to whitewater parks and the diagram on the right is the drive times. So this is the article that was published in a Parks and Recreation Business Magazine. The article states that economic impact is dependent on the design of the park and the market. So when we're thinking about the old design versus the current design, it's important to note that the new design is more recreational impact or draw. And this article has six parks highlighted in the article that show economic impact ranging from 1.7 to $18 million annually. So this is how Solida really markets their community. And I don't, I don't know, PT, are you on, on the call? So I, I didn't see him on here earlier. So PT, what is the mayor of Solida? And he was going to talk about their, their, their water park there and how much of a draw it is to their community. But, you know, everything you read about the community, it really is the center of it. So we'll move on to the next slide, which is the hydraulics of the actual design and I'll turn it over to Mason.
Hi, everybody. So obviously, you know, the hydraulics and hydraulic modeling are an important part of the design of the overall park and get into, you know, all sorts of details. But tonight was just really wanted to focus on, and Dan wanted to focus on that, you know, the upstream impacts that's due to the lowering of that water surface at the dam. So that's, we're going to focus on today. So can go on to the next slide. So this is the existing dam. Might look familiar. But you can see it has two tainer gates where the water flows underneath. And these are operated to maintain specific upstream water surface elevation at the Forton Street USGS gauge. An elevation of 841.5. Now, now the 88, and that's, you know, you can see on the, you can watch on the gauge and it, it can hit pretty close usually within, you know, it could be six inches up or six inches down. But usually within about 841 or 842. And then, but then during flood flows, the gates can be opened more to allow more water to pass through to avoid flooding upstream. And that's, that's really what is a controlling factor in the, the crest elevation of, of that first drop. That's because we have per floodplain regulations. The project must be designed to have no negative impact to the regulatory floodplain, which is defined by that 100 year water surface elevation. And so you can go ahead and go to the next slide. And so this is a screenshot from our preliminary design. This has the upper area is the existing dam. You can see the two tainer gate bays on the right. And then there's a, the bay on the left is, has timber stop logs that are not adjusted. And then on lower, you can see the proposed crest section. You can see where we're going to put in that boulder structure and the, the lower section where water would flow over at low flows and then water would flow over everywhere at higher flows. And so the crest of the boulder structure is really, you know, we're trying to set it as, as high as possible to still meet on these no rise floodplain requirements. And so that there's no increase in the floodplain. And, but then at lower flows, when you don't have the adjustability of the gates, the water surface is lower than it is currently. And, but then at lower flows, when you don't have the adjustability of the gates, the water surface is lower than it is currently. Even though we're minimizing that amount as if, you know, compared to if you took the dam all the way down to its foundations. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So to analyze the hydraulics of the project at various flow rates, use hydraulic modeling, use a software called HEC RAS. It's developed by the US Army Corps. And is the standard for hydraulic modeling. This is the proposed model at the mean flow on in the Yhara River to the proposed conditions. And this water surface is colored by velocity and particle tracing is turned on. And within the project area here, the model is, is 2D, two dimensional. And we have bathometric survey data that Interflu've collected in this upstream area. And downstream as well from surveyors. We also have surveyed water surface elevations. It's got a pretty good idea. So that here, the model is calibrated to those water surface elevations. And obviously it's changed as the design has progressed and this upstream, we've still have this preliminary design and as we've been moving through permitting with DNR, you know, it turns out we're going to have to be, we're going to have to permit this a little differently than we thought, which might open up some other options. So this is just based on that design plans that you guys have currently. So for this current design, we're modeling a decrease in the water surface elevation of three and a half feet at the dam at the mean flow compared to existing conditions. And so you can see the, the topography here is shaded by elevation. And so this upstream portion of the dam where it's kind of green and yellow, that's the area that would be exposed for this design. Go to the next slide. So farther upstream of Stoughton, the hydraulic model goes to a 1D hydraulic model, which is based on the DNR's existing 1D hydraulic model of the Yhara River. This is generally adequate for hydraulic modeling. But the model is built for analyzing flood flows. And so the degree of certainty at small, smaller scales reduced. And there's been considerable interest from the public on the effect of water levels in this upstream reach farther from the project site. So the cities decided to invest in collecting more data up here to ensure modeling is accurate. Further in these areas further from the project. So go to the next slide. Dan. So this is number of locations upstream of Stoughton, all the way up to Lake Gonsa. Where we're surveying, stranded surveying bathometric cross sections and water surface elevations at low, medium and high flows. And this will provide us the data to calibrate and validate the hydraulic model in these upstream areas at normal flows. And so this hasn't. So this, so we haven't, they haven't finished, we haven't received this data yet from Strand. I think they've gotten two out of the three water surface elevations. So just want to let you know that so far our model up here is culinary and is based on the the existing 1D DNR model for this reach. But we'll still present the preliminary results. And so you can go to the next slide. And so this is, this is just to give you an idea, this is based on the the gauge at Forton Street, based on all the years of data. This this is just a monthly average flow graph. The solid black line is the mean flow for each month. Light gray lines are the mean flow for each month of with each year of data. And then also shown the blue is a box plot for the data for each month. So the annual mean flow at Forton Street, so the project site is 380 CFS. And so we want to we're getting, we're targeting low, medium and high flows to calibrate the model to, to make sure we're accurate in all those flows. So the you can see like August has the lowest, lowest mean flow and and highest is in April and May. So we're using a so for this, for the survey that's being done, we're targeting a flow of about 150 CFS. The medium flow of 380 CFS for the annual mean flow and then a high flow of 600 CFS just to get a to make sure we're accurate for the most flows that are going to expect to see. So you can go to the next slide, Dan. So again, these are, these are preliminary results from modeling and we're expecting this is kind of, you know, this would probably be the most change you would see. And the, so, you know, we presented this to Dan County and some of the staff there that's done a lot of hydraulic modeling, they're expecting it to be, they expected the change to be less than we're showing. That's why we're collecting that, the additional data to make sure we're accurate in this, this area. But so first off, this is, so this, this is we're looking, this is the water surface profile all the way from the project site from the existing dam all the way up to Lake Gonsa. So this is quite quite a ways here, you can see. This is, and this is a, this is the water surface profile for existing conditions at 380 CFS, which again is that is the mean flow of the Yhara River at the site. And these black lines are are bridges lines. And so the farthest left is Main Street. Upstream of that is Forton Street where the, where the gauge is. And upstream of that is the railroad bridge. And then we've got quite a ways upstream, there's County Road B. And then all the way to the right is the outlet to a lot of Lake Gonsa. So you can go to the next, next slide. So this is the range of water surface elevations from 150 CFS to 650 CFS. So this is kind of a normal range of flow we'd expect in the Yhara River. And you can see in the model at Forton Street, we've got it, the gates are targeting the elevation of 841.5. And so, you know, in reality, it's, it's usually can go up to 842 or 841. But this is based on that. Hitting that 841.5 at Forton Street. And then as you move upstream, just like any river, when the water is higher, there's more flow. The water surface is higher and then at lower flow, the water surface is lower and that's where that range comes from. Go to the next slide. And so this is, this is based on that. Or the model we've got, this is the proposed water surface elevations. And we've got that, that dark blue line is the median, the mean flow. And then down below, we've got our low flow of 150 CFS and upper flow of 650 CFS. So you can see as you get upstream of the railroad bridge. You know, we've got the, you know, the flow of 650 CFS. And the proposed conditions about equal to the existing conditions at 150 CFS. And as you get lower, you know, the you know, the mean flow we're looking at, we're like a round of foot of drop and it decreases as you go upstream. And then at the outlet of Lake Gonsa, you've got very little drop. And so, so this is, you know, there's, again, this is based on this, this, this area upstream is based on the 1D DNR flood model. And there's, I won't get into the weeds of hydraulic modeling, but there's, you need to calibrate roughness coefficients for these different flows up here. And we want to get some, some up to date cross sections. And, and Dane County, based on their, Dane County staff, based on their, you know, they've done extensive hydraulic modeling of this, the whole chain of lakes and they're, they're of the opinion that that you would see that there wouldn't be this amount of prop. So that's why we're collecting the additional data just to make sure we're we're accurate in this. In this area. And I go to the next slide, Dan. So, you know, we've got, we're putting together, Dan asked us to put together a video that we can make public where we can really go through all the steps of this hydraulic modeling and present the present the findings. So this is just a snippet of that video and that's once once we've got it finalized.
So does any council member have any questions for Mason at this time with respect to just the hydraulic, hydraulic study he just presented?
I have a question, Regina.
Thanks, Fred. Go ahead.
The current design, you said the water level at the dam would be three and a half feet lower. Aside from satisfying the DNR's definition of a dam or not a dam, is there any reason why the curl wave and the whitewater park couldn't have their openings, their apertures where the river enters into the park start at a higher level?
Yeah, that's a great question. So yeah, we've got the so the, so the, so the primary thing controlling what elevation we set that the crest at is, is the floodplain. Is the floodplain regulations. We need to make sure that, that we're not, we're not raising floodplain anymore than during their flood flows when they can, we can, they can raise the existing gates. And so, you know, in our model, we've got a, or in the design, we have a, you know, it's, we're creating these drops with with boulders and grouting that. And, and so, you know, to have and so, you know, if you, I think, I think you're asking if there was some sort of way to adjust that crest elevation so that, so that you.
I'm sorry, if you could start it higher, then one would be certain that the water level behind what is currently the dam area would keep a higher water level. And you're saying that that might violate the floodplain? Existing floodplain?
Exactly, exactly. And that's, you know, you know, and we want, we want to you know, the higher we put it, the more hydraulic drop there is to create the waves and the, and the, create more more drops. But, you know, of critical importance, we don't, we don't want to raise water surface elevations for the, for the floodplains. We don't flood any properties upstream, but then obviously for regulatory purposes, for that 100 year flow, we need to prove that our proposed project will not to raise the floodplain elevation at all. And again, you know, we'll be going through and taking, you know, as we move forward with design, looking really closely and making sure, seeing if there's any opportunity to, you know, if we can make that, that crest elevation a little higher so that so that without raising that 100 year flood elevation, we could, we can limit the drop, you know, upstream as much as we possibly can.
Say may else have a question? Just because we have you on there, Mason and Dan, with respect to strands collecting more data, is, is there a collection site in the Bay Area at Pleasant Springs? Yeah, so there is. So that one right there that you're circling is in the Bay Area. Thank you. Does anybody else have a question? So Mason, I know this is going to come up. I mean, and, and you've done a great job with presenting, but so going from the dam to Main Street, what is the expected drop in water level? And then from Main Street to the railroad bridge and the railroad bridge to Highway B. I mean, you have those graphs, but it's really hard to ascertain what is the actual drop that you can expect, let's say, at the median range and the, the low range?
Yeah. Great. Well, then so from you know, we've got, we've, we've got since Dan, we've got the inundation maps showing from, from existing to proposed as well with water surface elevations. But so for the mean flow of 380 CFS, like right at the dam, we're showing it dropping down at 838, elevation 838, which is the three and a half feet below. And at Main Street, that's pretty similar. And as you get to Forton Street, that drop is, is about two and a half feet in the railroad bridge. It depends if you're downstream or upstream. Upstream, it's about a foot and a half drop at that location. And then and then 150 CFS, which is pretty low. We've got the drop at the at the dam is, is about four feet. Or four and a half feet at the dam. As you move upstream, Main Street's like four feet, Forton Streets, you know, two and a half feet. And the railroad bridge is about two feet.
Okay, thank you.
So, and then we've been, you know, you know, recently been really focusing on our design for, there's the improvements downstream of Fourth Street. And so we've been advancing that design. Been doing the floodplain modeling for that as well as for the pedestrian bridge. And that's, you know, so we need to, so we're working on all the grading, designing, filling that tail race and the improvements there that we don't raise the floodplain at all. And so that's, so that's where we're, we're working with Strand because they're designing that project that's going to go out to bid in March. So that's, that's the portion that we've really advanced and we just sent over our permitting, preliminary permitting set, draft permitting set that hopefully goes through permitting with the, with the trail and pedestrian bridge downstream. You know, next week or so.
So Regina, I have a question.
Sure.
So what will this mean? What will, what will this mean for voting? If you know, in the existing bays is three of them. One, one in Pleasant Springs, one sort of just, just north of the, or just, yeah, just north of the railroad bridge and then the Bay Area. You know, around the whitewater park, is that going to affect the ability for like a boat with a motor to go downstream and upstream?
Well, so, you know, obviously in the area, I guess immediately upstream of the project. So from like the dam up through Main Street, you know, it's going to convert from just this, this stagnant reservoir to a flowing river. So the you're going to have, you know, yeah, more kayakers and things like that, that, you know, but all the water will be focused within a channel. So I don't know, it depends on what craft you have, what exactly, how much, how much depth you'll need. But there'll be a couple of feet of water to to float a boat in. So I guess it'll just depend what how deep that goes. And then upstream of the railroad bridge, you know, into the bays. You know, there's, there's, you know, it might be more similar to what it's like currently during low flows. Might be more of what you see most of the time. And again, as we, that's the area we're really focused on to make sure we're accurate in that area to know how much that water will drop.
And what about the Pleasant Springs area?
Yeah. And that's, that's the area upstream of County Road B, I think. And so that's, as you move upstream, there's, there's less and less less and less effect. So on that one, you know, the, in our current model, we're showing proposed like 650 CFS will be pretty much, this will be the same as, as like 650 CFS will be pretty much this, will be the same as as at currently at like 380 CFS.
And that's water level?
Yes, that's, so that's, that's, that's the why, that's the water level. So that, so the number of, I'm saying, so I'm sorry, CFS is is cubic feet per second. If you don't know, that's the amount of flow in the river. And then the water level depends, depends on that flow. So the water level, so the change as you move farther upstream for the project, the change in the water level becomes less and the proposed water level basically at, at you know, will be like at normal flows, will be more similar that to how it is currently at lower flows, if that makes sense.
So the farther you get downstream, the more it's affected for water level, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions for Mason at this time? You're none? Thanks Mason. Or was there a question?
When can we expect that updated hydraulic estimate?
So I'll need to touch back to Strand and what their status is, but I think probably in the next, so they've got, I know they've collected the bathymetric cross sections and at least two of the water surface elevations. And I think they're hoping to get the next one, the last one, you know, coming up here in in March. And so, and we can, so we can start calibrating to those, those, those other flows even before they get that last one. So and then we'll have to do, you know, QA QC and everything. So, you know, probably another month or so.
Thank you.
Fred, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, I did for Mason. We have a unique feature. We have the three square culverts that run under Fourth Street. One of those will become a part of the River Path walkway, but we still would have two channels with a giant cement buttress in the middle. Is that a relatively difficult feature to create safe conditions?
Yeah, so that's a great, that's a great question. And and that's something we looked closely at our, you know, last round of design and something will continue to 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 look at how we'll actually construct that. But if you look, you know, it's actually in that on that concept plan, you can see it, we, we include a little island and divider, kind of extending upstream of that that middle buttress for that exact reason, because, you know, there will be current flowing on the either side of that. And there would be the potential for, you know, especially an inflatable craft or someone to rap on that. And so we want to, you know, extend that out to where there's where it's where we have a calm pool and then you can, and then users can, you know, kind of pick which culvert to go through and go through that. So, yeah, it's a great question.
Thanks Mason. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? All right, Dan, we're moving on.
Yeah, so why the new design options? So why did we go from having the old concept plan with the dam in there and then the one without it? So I think you first have to look at the purpose of dams. The Stoughton Dam was built for the purpose of hydropower to power the factories. You know, when the dam was, the current dam was repaired. You know, the thought was that we're, the city was going to use it for hydropower, pre-hydropower, but it was found that it wasn't cost effective to actually do it. Really, the other purposes of the dams include irrigation, flood control and water storage, which are not purposes of this dam that we have here in Stoughton. So it's really obsolete and serves no functional purpose besides creating a mill pond area. You know, the flood control dam is usually for like, you know, flood control purposes, you know, you see dams on TV that washed away and places downstream are inundated with water and flooded. That's not the way that this dam works. It doesn't control the the flow or doesn't control the water levels downstream. So if you live in Dunkirk, you shouldn't be, you know, that's why we don't have to have any like study of water levels after the project is completed downstream, I guess is what I'm saying. So then there's also the public safety concerns of dams. Dams are dangerous. The stat on the bottom is from the state dam safety officials, the statistics on dust and incidents each year. And this is from 2019. You can see there's fifty six best at dams. There was also an incident in July of 2018 where a kayaker was pulled through the Stoughton Dam and nearly drowned. So a negative consequence of having a dam is that it really blocks the river. So dam removals and added pools, you know, they're really, it's really gonna help the fish and other species that use the river. And Jim sort of touched on this a little bit, but this is a direct quote from the fisheries biologist in the region who's looked at the project and, you know, he's expects you know, game fish populations, like smallmouth bass to really with this project. So there's four factors that really cause, cause algae blooms and and bacteria. You need a mix of nutrients, high water temperatures typically over seventy seven degrees, stagnant water and sun. Well, dams contribute to this type to this by impounding the water and attracting the sediments. Impounding of the water increases retention time and allows the water to become stagnant and warm. So this, this graphic on the bottom really shows that, you know, this is the same flow, but you can see that there's way less retention time in the right than there is in the left. So where you have on the left is more like the reservoir like we have in the mill pond area where it's slow water, if there's not a lot of velocity. And then the right where there is a lot of velocity, same amount of flow. So here's a, here's all pictures of water quality. The one on the left, you can see how stagnant the river is in Stoughton. This is just down street to Forton Street. And then the one on the right, this is from Stebbinsville where the dam was removed. You can see the water's lots for when dams act the sediment traps, you know, the water moves downstream and also brings sediment along with it. So you can see this area, this is a typical run of river, water moves downhill, sediment moves with the water, gets trapped for the dams. This creates an adverse effect on downstream aquatic species in their habitats. Then also, the new design also brings additional recreational value. You know, we're gonna convert this area that's gonna be exposed in the mill pond to parkland. There's gonna be trails running through there connecting to Water Street. And also there's an additional paddling feature with the dams. So the next few slides will cover the steering committee, what experts funded the meeting and the committee recommendations. Regina is gonna carry or cover this part of the presentation.
Thank you, Dan. I've been on the Whitewater Steering Committee since its inception. And this is a list of our committee members. And so you can see there's a diverse group of people that come from many different backgrounds and specialties and interest in this area. We were charged with several overall objectives of providing support and guidance and oversight of the whole process, but also reviewing the plans and all the technical data that have come in both through the Park and Recs Department and City Council. So we kind of wrote like the first line of reviewing and then went to Park and Recs and then on to the City Council. Next slide, Dan, please. So we started around June of 2018 and we kind of got together, but you know, the key thing is what we did is, is this project kept going along. We kept in viewing this, at least I did, this project as like an onion. Every time we looked at a plant or looked at something, it was like we peeled another layer. Okay, now we need a sediment study, we need a hydraulic study. I mean, it just, we were just unfolding everything that needed to be done and getting it done. And in the meantime, we kept on bringing in experts, people that have gone through this before, we've looked at, talked to so many people from different communities, both in Wisconsin and outside of Wisconsin that have had their dams removed or built whitewater parks. And one of our first meetings in September of 2018, when we had John Reimer and from Dane Conney, who is in charge of dams and the River Alliance and W, the DNR there, and we're proposing this, you know, the original plan. And we're talking about it, trying to get their idea of what their idea, whether they liked it, whether they're not, the benefits, the cost benefits, et cetera. And John Reimer basically just says, can the dam and the whitewater park coexist? And that, you know, we both all looked at that first initial design and, you know, we just we're looking at it. And so let's go down to the next slide, Dan, or the next two. Go to the where the designs are. There you go. So the old design versus the new design and the old design with the dam in and all the water features going off, well, looking at it this way off to your left and going down. We just, you know, public safety was paramount to this group and we just could not figure out a way that we would make, could make this park safe and not have somebody go through the dam. There, there's nothing that you can put in to block people from going there. You could put up signage when they enter, you could put up possibly buoys telling them danger. But the fact of the matter is, we could not figure out a way that we could consciously think that kids, novices, teenagers with that group mentality and daredevil type mentality, we could not figure out a way that we could make that safe. It just, it was not a good thing. So we asked, you know, Gary, Lacey and Mason to come up with an alternative design. We didn't decide on it right away whether dam in or dam out. We, you know, looked at all the other studies, all the other designs. I mean, there was other designs that, you know, had, you know, instead of the part on the left, we just had multiple little rapids coming down the middle center of it. But it all came down. And then when we got the sediment samples and we really wanted to remediate that, we felt like the the new design was the best. And the new design, you know, it took in everything that we were really concerned about. It capped the toxins from the sediment study. It really decreased public safety concerns. It extended that trail system and added more park space. It, you know, minimally between the two changed the water level upstream. It added a new water feature that would bring in more tourism, more excitement to this area. And it, you know, it just, it created a better feel. And I guess that's all I can say is that it just met all these criteria that we had developed. So you can go on to the next slide. And so the other thing that I want to say about this committee, steering committee, not only did we, you know, really focus on getting a good design, we looked at the trail system, but when we started getting concerns or questions from the the community, we we would bring in experts to try to learn you know, about what their concern was, but also to try to, if there was anything that we could do in the design or anything that would alleviate or, you know, change that concern. For one of the things is that, um, and I think you know, on the next slide, we had Andy Polios from the DNR com, because there was concerns from a couple of different community members that the drop in water and the loss of the mill fab site and possibly, you know, if there is any change of water up in the Bay Area, if that was gonna have a negative impact on wildlife. And Andy basically said that none of this is a critical wildlife or waterfall habitat or wildlife habitat. It's not ranked well. And even if the water level changes, that means that there'll be more shoreline, more native species along the edges and that will shift more to different species of birds, different reptiles, you know, et cetera. He says, it's a change. It's neither good or bad. And he, he wasn't gonna rank which is better or worse. He said they're both good. And, you know, he wasn't concerned about it. We also had Chuck Ungs from Lynn County, Iowa, who came in, who really worked on the Manchester Park in Iowa. And he not only works for their conservation department, but he was, you know, a fishery guy. He lives in that area. He was getting pushed back from another people when this idea came into there. And he just says, you know, people were concerned about the drop in water, you know, the aesthetics, how it was gonna look, how it was gonna, if people would actually come. And he put everybody's, you know, questions and fears to rest because it improved fisheries, the people that were concerned about the drop in water, it never really materialized, the people that were way upstream. And it's just been a boon for the economy and their tourism. And then we had Emily Stanley come just a couple of weeks ago because there was concerns about blue green algae and brain eating amoeba and other water quality concerns. And she again, just talked about, just like Jim Killian talked about, once you take out the stagnant water with the mill pond and you create rapids, which allows water to actually grab more oxygen, it, you're not gonna have blue green algae because blue green algae like stagnant water. Blue green algae is associated with the number of phosphorus, amount of phosphorus and nitrogen in the water with moving water. It's not gonna be a problem. Again, the brain eating amoeba or whatever it was that was a concern. She just says that's a red herring. Yes, it may be found in some, you know, wa- bodies of water in Minnesota, but that one that is mainly found down south and over fifty years, it's only killed a hundred and forty five people. Not to discredit death or anything, but it was very low in southern states, the temperature of the water had been over a hundred and thirteen degrees and it had been in stagnant water. Again, getting rid of the dam, getting water moving that kind of keeps the water cooler and it doesn't allow these organisms to survive. So with that, you know, we've taken all these concerns very, very seriously. We really don't want anybody to get sick and we think that we're working with Mason and Interflu and the DNR to make sure that anything that's brought up that we research and we make sure that we'd create the the safest part that we can possibly create. So I think that's the last slide, right? Any questions on that? Or if any of the other committee members want to chime in? Hearing dead silence. I think we put them all to sleep. Let's move on.
So the next few slides will cover the project benefits of actually doing the project. These are the different project benefits and there'll be a slide on each one. So the water quality, you know, we've been talking about that. It's really gonna be improved through us, retention time and aeration. It's really going to be improved through us retention time and aeration from the rapids. And this graphic really shows that it's the water velocity. You can see there's going to be a lot less retention time when the project's completed. And it's also going to be required by the DNR to manage the sediment. Let them have a sediment management plan as part of the project. And this will mitigate any negative impact on downstream water quality. And we'll remediate the sediments like Jim mentioned earlier. And this will make it the area safer for humans and children. I'll let Regina cover this slide.
Yeah, right now, I think the upper slide is probably around the Milfabb old area with respect to, or maybe it's up further, I can't remember. Um, just the shoreline, it's a roding that creates, puts more sediment into the river. It has a lot of undesirable kind of, you know, species of plants along the river's edge. It doesn't allow for people to actually access the river because it's so choked over with those species. And then on the bottom, that shows really what a site looks like when you're, you know, you can cap it and restore it. It, it's great for many different organisms. It's great for, you know, margatory songbirds to nest and live in. It's, it's great for native pollinators and other beneficial insects. It's great habitat again for amphibians and another spot for reptiles. It's a great area that, you know, we're taking something that is kind of contaminated and we need to like cap it and turn it into a parkland, which is great, you know? And I think after, you know, it starts to be established, I think people that were concerned about it not being a benefit will see that it is actually a benefit to wildlife.
And the picture below is from Merrill, Wisconsin, where a dam was removed. And this is a former dam site, like Regina was saying. And it was restored and it was made into a park and there's a trail system in there. So it's very representative of what the mill pond looked like. And there's an article on the Wisconsin Public Radio website that talks about it. And talks, it was twenty years ago and this was done and all this became a community asset. So let's also do, this will also be improvement for fish, you know, spawning, feeding, resting, other habitats. This really reconnecting and enabling the fish and other aquatic species to thrive. So these are fish passages that are circled as part of the whitewater design. And they're tailored around Northern Pike, which are notoriously bad swimmers, probably the worst ones in the river. So that's why you design around those and other species in the river would be able to use those fish patches. The design also incorporates those current deflectors and the fish will use those to feed. Then this is a case study, you know, you can look at Woolamoo or Mills Dam and the dam removals in Baraboo. And they talk about like eighteen months after the removals, researchers found a lot more species in the river because the river's healthier. And there's a lot more smallmouth bass. And that's, that's really reflective of what fish biologists from the DNR are telling us. And this will also be Wisconsin's first in-stream whitewater park. It'll be free to use, just like a playground. So people with canoes, kayaks will be able to use the park, get through there, especially using that salt bypass channel. And overlook aspects include addition of canoe kayak launches and the current deflectors, like I mentioned before, and like the trail system. And the kayak launches, they're all going to be ADA accessible, so anybody can use them regardless of their ability levels. So nearly half of the river will be open to the public, it's historically private. So, you know, this will be beneficial to fishermen for access for fishing in the river. Nature watchers or anyone who really wants to access the river in this area. And this project also creates an additional half mile riverfront trail in Stoughton. And if you remember back at the beginning of the slides, that's one of the major things that people want to see in Stoughton. This has been planned to connect to the Lowery Hair River Trail from the county. And it's a regional trail. That's the one that's going to connect Stoughton to Madison and going to be going through McFarland and Lake Farm Park. There's also a pedestrian bridge planned that will connect the trail to Man Park. And most communities that have these types of parks, those will be long or extended, be long or weekend events. The picture on the left is from a hooligan race at Fibark in Salida. And as part of the Man Park master planning process, you know, incorporated additional parking. But also created additional green space, which will be able to host more special events into, in Stoughton. And also there's the two viewing plazas incorporated into the whitewater park design where people will be able to see it, just like you see in this picture here on the left. So this is a picture, the picture on the left is a picture of a riverfront building in West Bend where the dam was removed. They saw, they saw added value to their community by moving the dam. There's also multiple economic impact studies in our website. If you look at the Grand Rapids, Michigan one, it's much more encompassing than the one we had. And it also looked at proper utilization along the river and Grand Rapids. So they have a lot of low level utilization, as they call it. And that's pretty much the same as Stoughton. You know, low level utilization would include like the current RDA site where there's no buildings, the bus, the school district bus garage, utilities building and unirail. This project could really spur long-term changes to better utilize its best natural asset. There's also an economist from Texas A&amp;M who studies park impacts and property values. It's called the proximate principle. And it's believed improvements to Man Park and the riverfront area will improve the property values of up to twenty percent. Then people are worried about the dam removal or dam modification on property values. The University of Wisconsin had a study that looked at property values of small dam removals in southern Wisconsin, including Rockdale and Baraboo. They saw property values being improved because of that. So the economic impact obviously is something that to be considered, you know, it's, uh, but the industry's most positively impacted restaurants and bars, gasoline and auto, groceries and liquor stores. This is typical, what happens in other communities. So for example, in Manchester, Iowa, they had a group hub open within walking distance of their park shortly after it opened. It's just something to keep in consideration if you like going out to eat in downtown Stoughton. It's going to help those businesses. So then there's also the option of doing rentals. So that'd be direct revenue to the city. The rental or shuttle operation is a consideration. And these are typically contracted out, but they also run in-house and in Arbor, Michigan, for example. That's the one graphic on the left. They rental over five hundred boats, or they have five hundred boats they rent out per day. And the average nine hundred rentals on a nice weekend. They turned a sixty thousand dollar profit in two thousand twelve and they turned over a hundred thousand dollar profit the last few years. There's also the option of selling naming rights for the park. We've had calls with consultants who do this for a job. And, you know, they estimate that we could get between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars of remaining rights per year for, for naming rights for the park. So this is from a study from the University of Wisconsin. Again, they looked at attracting young people to communities. And what they found is this is one of the type of improvements that young people want to see in their community.
Does anybody have any questions on that, this last part? Before we move into, I guess, the budget that comes up next?
Could I comment on something, Regina?
Sure, Fred.
A number of the reports and also City, the Hub articles and stuff referred to the thirty million dollar number. In fact, we just saw it on the graph a couple of minutes ago. I find that impossible to believe. And here's how I look at it. Thirty million dollars of economic activity in a hundred and eighty days. That's April fifteenth through October fifteenth. The sixty-eight dollars a day being spent by each kayaker means that we need to have twenty-four hundred and fifty kayakers here every day for a hundred and eighty days. That's five hundred and fifty cars with four people each roughly. And that is so far from realistic that I think it should no longer be included in any of the conversations about the whitewater park. In fact, even the thirty thousand kayakers a year over a hundred and eighty days is a hundred and sixty-six people a day. I mean, that, that's a lot of people on a Monday, on a rainy Tuesday or, you know, a chilly April day. So I think we need to have either a new economic study or a reliable economic study because this one is simply not realistic. So can we get an additional economic study?
So if you read the report, it says that it'd be mostly locals doing a thirty minute and it would transition to a sixty minute. Thirty thousand people, I don't believe is unattainable. We get sixteen thousand people roughly patrol beach with a much shorter season. And they have lots of recreational draw, in my opinion.
I would add twenty-one thousand people for the Opera House. And that's twenty-one thousand. So it gives you kind of an idea and, and they have basically seventy to eighty shows a year.
Okay, so we might make the thirty thousand number in a hundred and eighty days. So that might be realistic, a hundred and sixty-six people a day. But could we please discard the thirty million dollar a year? Absolutely unrealistic number when we continue to talk about this?
Regina, I have a
Let somebody answer first.
Yeah, I would just say that, given what's going on right now in the world, I think that if we got a hundred people to Stoughton today, the downtown business owners and then the rest of the business owners in Stoughton would be thrilled with that. So, you know, to me, whatever we get as far as economic development is really icing on the cake. If you take all the other benefits that Regina and Dan and our guests outlined as far as the water quality, the fishing, the trails, capping the contamination, all them things alone is enough to really, for me to do the project. Anything we do above and above, beyond that and economic development is really a bonus.
I recognize the beauty and appreciate the Riverwalk, the pedestrian bridge, the whitewater park. Looks like a very nice amenity. You know, my concern about the water level dropping behind the dam. But aside from that, I agree with you, there's a lot of good possibilities, a lot of good benefits. But I don't think it's being particularly straightforward to use that thirty million dollar number over and over and over when we know that's unachievable. So I just think we ought to maybe talk about thirty thousand people at sixty-eight dollars a day. And that would at least approach realistic.
Fred, I, I, I don't know where you're thinking that everybody's throwing around the thirty million.
It's on the graph.
Right, right, it is. But, you know, you've got to remember, Fred, this is a study based on data. And, and studies can be proven or disproven. It's, it's a study, it's, it's not a case study of an area that's in exist, that Stone already has. And so you base it on the best available data that you have. And you turns out, I mean, nobody's, you know, nobody's promoting that we're looking at thirty million dollars a year. We're looking at as, what we're, I think what you need to do, what that study is look that, hey, there's going to be some economic input or impact to our downtown based on this new amenity. Whether it turns to be a million dollars or five million dollars or whatever, that's all a good thing. I don't think we, nobody is being held to those numbers because it's just a study to give you information. It's not a study based on Stoughton's fact yet. Hopefully in ten years, we can have a true study based on actual numbers, Fred. And then I would love, you know, then you can go around and say, yeah, I was right or no, hey, look at, we didn't meet it.
Well, I wouldn't be very interested in going around saying that, but I don't think this information is particularly helpful. A lot of people find it so hard to believe that it makes them think that people are being disingenuous. So I think it should be discarded and we should work with realistic numbers.
These numbers that were used in the study were based on the best available data from other like communities, like amenities. That's how studies are done, you know, unless you're doing a case study. It, there's not hard and fast that this is absolutely what's going to happen. It's just, you know, they're putting it out there based on the best available data. Anybody else? Sid, did you have a question?
I do. Well, a comment, I think this is an appropriate time to do that. I, I think that Fred is right, I think that's an absolutely ridiculous number. I don't think we'd ever, ever achieve it, given the number of people that we can expect to come to Stoughton for this. Sharon and Mason Borsman and I have, and others have generally opposed to the dam removal in Whitewater Park. But I, we have independently studied the issue and I can see that there are some positives to this. But the thirty million dollars just seems to me to be a, it's, it's a pipe dream. It's just outrageously out of line. You know, I have a lot of other concerns that we can get to, but I don't want to keep everybody. But there's one thing that's really concerning me and that is there, there is currently a petition signed by seven hundred people opposing this whitewater dam and removal in, in the park.
Sid, Sid? We're, we, you know, in respectful of your colleagues' time and we still have more presentation to go.
Well, well, Regina, this is, this is an advertisement and you have been advertising all night about this. And, and I think that, that there is no contravailing opinions being expressed by people. And I think this is an appropriate time for us to do this.
Sid, this is not about opinions. This is about getting through the data. And then, you know, with everybody online, I'd like to get us through the data and not have it, you know, if your question is relevant to what was this asked or
Okay, the question is, shouldn't we have a referendum and have the city residents make some decisions about this rather than putting this to a committee of the whole in the council?
No longer a question on the data that was just for, to just
Certainly, we should have a referendum on this matter.
I'm going to ask you to please refrain and let Dan continue on with his presentation. Thank you.
And so the next few slides will be about the budget and the next steps for the project. So like I mentioned before, there's three phases to the project. Really, to simplify things, it's really phase one is Forest Street, the A Street, the trail, Riverwalk area. And then the bridge connecting Man Park and RDA site. The phase two improvements would be the in-water improvements, the trail of the mill pond and the remediation or restoration in the area. Then phase three would be the first phase of a Man Park master plan improvements. So that was the project site. This is the budget for phase one. The blue is the pedestrian bridge, orange is the riverbank restoration, yellow is the trail items. So the city has been successful in acquiring over eight hundred thousand dollars in grant funding for this phase of the project. You can see the total cost is nine hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and twelve. This is based on engineer estimates. It still needs to go to bed, obviously. But what I can say is that it ranks very high on a lot of different grant programs, including But what I can say is that it ranks very high on a lot of different grant programs, including the Wisconsin DNR recreational grant program. And to segue into that, these are the completed, completed a date grants that we've applied for. So in May 2018, we applied for the Whitewater Park. It was really a good thing that we did not get that. And the reason we didn't get it was really project readiness. What I will say for that is the grant application rang very high of all the applicants in the state. But if the project isn't ready to go and get built within two years and it's not completed, the money goes back to the General Fund of the State of Wisconsin. The DNR can't complete another recreational project that would get completed. Then in September 2018, Gary Becker and RDA were successful of acquiring an idle site's grant award for $500,000. This is to be used in the RDA site, which includes the Riverwalk and the pedestrian bridge. Then in May of 2019, we applied again for the WDNR recreational grant program and received a stewardship fund grant for $168,979. And this was for the riverbank restoration, the trail, and RDA site. Then in February of last year, we applied for the Wisconsin DNR Municipal Flood Control Grant Program. They're unsuccessful. So the flood control grant program, there's different there's a lot of different projects that qualify for that grant program. And creating flood storage is one we would apply for. Or we did apply for, and it's a middle ranking priority for the grant program. However, if you go back to 2018, when there's substantial flooding in Wisconsin, those projects rank higher than flood storage ranking. So we were unsuccessful because mostly due to the flooding and then the flood projects. So then in April 2020, we applied for the municipal dam program grant. We were placed on, the city was placed on a priority funding list for the grant, which means that if we continue with the traditional dam removal, we have received the funds. So really, we need to figure out, the city needs to figure out if it wants to do a regular dam removal or not. But the DNR concluded is that the Whitewater Park design was ineligible. And it's mostly goes back to what Mason says, we're trying to minimize or mitigate any type of water loss of surface elevations upstream of the Stoughton Dam. And and it also is needed to create a head for the paddling features as well. So then in May 2020, we applied for the US DOT Build Grant Program. It's a highly competitive grant program. Even if your project's great, you might not get to be successful with it. They've only won like one project per state really each year, and they get over 30, 300 applications. We had a debriefing meeting with the DOT about this back in November. And we really, if we're going to reapply for it, we need to turn it into more of a transportation-focused grant application and include more trail work and some other things with it. They do believe that the project is a great project, and it was, it just ranked high, but it just didn't get funded for them. Then also in May of 2020, we applied again for the WDNR recreational grant program. We were awarded $138,249 from Land Water Conservation Fund, that's for the pedestrian. And it says tentatively because we had to do a cultural resource site investigation for the bridge abutment sites. And those are, what they just do is they make sure there's no Native American artifacts or anything in the bridge abutment sites. The report came back and there was no evidence of anything like that. So soon we'll be taking that to council for approval. And like I said before, that's for the pedestrian bridge connecting Man Park to the RDA site. So the Phase Two budget, these include all the in-water improvements, the remediation and restoration, conversion of the hydrace and tellerace areas, and then additional trail work. So this is the budget for the second phase, and it's based off the preliminary design order, and it might change as the engineering progresses. The dam removal costs have been rolled over to the Whitewater improvements category. And then the budget on the right reflects successfully acquiring a DNR recreational grant for the paddling features trails and then the hydrace-tellerace areas. You know, based on previous scoring, where the sum of the parts of the project, you know, where we've gotten grants for the pedestrian bridge and the Riverwalk, I feel like if we apply for the whitewater improvement features, they'll rank very high again. And we have a really good chance of acquiring the funds. So you can see there's like these numbers thrown out about the Whitewater Park what it really costs. Well, the real Whitewater Park cost is the $1.9 million figure. And like I just said, you know, it's likely going to be able to acquire a grant that pays for 50% of that cost. And then this budget also reflects being successful with the flood control grant. We would reapply for that in 2022. And, you know, there's a good shot that we would get that grant again, as long as there's not a major flood event. Then this is the third phase of the budget, and you can see that, number one, that's the first phase of improvements for the Man Park Master Plan. And it also included the pedestrian bridge. So if you look at our master plan, that's included. But however, I think I moved to the first phase of the project budget, just so we could, you know, when the Riverwalk was completed. So these are the line items for the different improvements in Man Park. It'll take two years to complete the engineering and permitting for these improvements. And we would, you know, we'll be likely apply for a grant funding in 2024 for this phase of the project as well. So these are the next steps for the project. The DNR would really like to have the city council make a decision prior to applying for the grant finance of Whitewater Park. And the permitting and bidding bidding phase for Phase One would happen in March, as previously mentioned today. And then the final design and permitting for Phase Two would happen in late spring, early summer with restoration plans being completed in conjunction with the final design. So I'd just like to thank all the presenters that came tonight. I think they cleared up a lot of the questions that a lot of people had. I think Regina would like to take them as well. And that concludes the presentation. So if there's any questions on the budgeting or or the the grants, you know, I can take those.
Anybody have any questions that really deal with the budgets?
Yeah, can you go, can you go back to the slide, Dan, and really focus on the actual cost of the dam removal and the Whitewater Park features? Because it looks like quite a bit of this other stuff we were planning on doing regardless.
Right. So the dam removal cost that was rolled into the Whitewater Park improvements. And it's really just to modify the area to make a paddling feature. So it made sense to roll that into that cost. So it's $1.9 million. The restoration remediation, that's created new parkland, you know, four acres roughly. It's mostly passive use with the trail connecting the Water Street. And then there's also additional trails and then the plazas and stuff, and that includes stabilizing the powerhouse area. If you look at it now, you know, it looks like it could fall into the tellerace.
All right. And then the other question I had is, when, if you want to go to the Phase Three, you know, what do you foresee the future of? Go to the map, Phase Three map, the the future of the fair?
Yeah, I think the fair, I think this, you know, there's obviously that's when and then part of the master planning process, there are stakeholder group, the consultants, you know, we selected them because they had experience working on fairgrounds, actually. And we wanted to make the park not only usable for the Whitewater Park, but more usable for them. So I think this this creates more open space area and parking for the fair, for sure. So you look at the four, number one, are one of the things they need is more parking. They've always said they need more parking. And then before, they could obviously set up the buys and things like that.
I have a question.
Sure. Sid, is that?
Okay, I just wondered if there's anything about this project that would prevent us to from going to a referendum to get the input of the citizens of the city of Stoughton? Is there anything about this project that would preclude us from having a referendum?
Yes, I would ask you to clarify which which part of the project, Sid, there's three phases.
I would say the Whitewater Park and dam removal.
So you want to go to referendum for approximately $1.9 million?
Well, respectfully, I think it's, I think it may be more than that. And I think that, I think we don't have a cost benefit analysis that's really is is very proper. I think Fred is totally right that the the numbers for how many people and the and the benefits that we're going to receive from the number of people coming in is is not is not, is is just not realistic. So and I, and I think that with 700 people having signed a petition against it, especially in upstream with with Pleasant Springs, and also a number of people in Stoughton authority express their opinion that they don't want a whitewater park and they don't want, especially a dam removal. That's going to be required for this whitewater park, that we should take it to referendum.
Sid, let me ask you a question. Have you looked at the petition signatures?
Yeah, the the you had mentioned, Mayor, that it's 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 a lot of people from not just the city, but especially from Pleasant Springs. And I I do think that, I I do think that this is a, this is such an important issue that that people from not just the city of Stoughton really should have some input into that. And I don't think that they've really had the input. I know that there's been some effort by our city to reach out to those townships. But I really do, I went and talking to a number of people, especially those having signed the petition, that they don't have, they don't have felt listened to and 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 that they're, that they really feel like there's not any input that they have. And I think that if it applies to people in Pleasant Springs, it probably will be applying to people in Stoughton as well. That this is kind of a slam dunk. It's a, it's a good advertisement, but, I mean, you did a great job in advertising this thing. But I haven't heard one thing other than, I don't think any, I haven't heard any negatives with the exception of both Fred and I saying, what about this? What about that? What about contaminants? What about PSAPs? You know, those kind of things. We, it's, it's, it's been, it's been a total advertiser, and it has been from the inception of this of this plan. So I think, I think people of the city have impacted such a big, it's a big issue.
Sid, you're you're forgetting that we've had numerous public hearings, which hundreds of people have come to. A referendum would not even include Pleasant Springs, so I don't know how that's going to benefit them. And usually if it's a referendum, it has to be initiated from, you know, with petitions from, you know, the community. We've, you know, for every person that you say that is against it, we probably have two or three that are for it. So at least two or three that are for it. So to say that this has just been a propaganda is really insulting to me.
Saying it was propaganda, I said it was an advertisement.
Yes. Well, that's basically advertisement. And so you basically really insulted myself, the mayor, Dan, the committee, all the experts that have been on today that have given their time, their talents, their knowledge, have done stuff for us. I think you're way out of line, Sid. We have gone year to year updating people, collecting the right amount of data and trying to do this due diligence the whole time. We have I'm talking.
I was insulting. I was not meaning to be insulting. I think we should have, I think we should have input from other people in this community.
Sid? You're being very insulting right now. Because you're
Why would this, why would raising the issue be insulting to you that saying that this is a one-sided presentation without any
Because this is chance. Sid, this is actually what community of the whole was about, is to get the information out to the committee. Our yes.
Point of order is, is that nobody should be talking unless they've been formally recognized by the chair. Has anybody been recognized by the chair?
Well, I was talking and I am the chair.
Besides you.
I was that recognized by the chair.
Yes, but you were, you were finished and I was talking and you interrupted. So thank you. Now, I don't want to get, this is, this is bad public relations. I want to go back to all of our great presenters. And is is there any questions from the council that have not been asked yet? That has to do with the information presented today?
Oh, Regina, could I ask a question?
Sure, Fred.
Okay. Dan, I was wondering on the material you just showed us, I think it went through the year 2025. If we proceeded with the Man Park renovations, the Whitewater Park and the dam removal, the the pathway up to Water Street, everything on our list, and we did not get any grants, how much money would we have to borrow?
Sorry, I muted. Roughly 6.5 million.
6.5 million. And would that be money that we would consider extending over a 20-year period of repayment rather than the usual 10-year period?
I couldn't answer that. I don't know. I'm not privy to the financing decisions. I'd be able to answer your question for the finance director.
Okay. Well, we considered that at the last council meeting because there was additional borrowing that was going to lead to a need to have the community not recognize how high their taxes were going to become to fund all of this. So we thought we would extend it over 20 years and by doing so incur an additional $7 million of finance charges as well. So I don't think we're ready to fund this project.
You'll have some other council member say something.
I think if you're not if you're not in the city council, please mute. We're getting a lot of feedback. Any other city council that wants to respond to Fred or have another question for tonight because it is getting awfully late? Hearing none. I guess again, I would love to like reach out and thank everybody for participating tonight. All our guest speakers, the city council, and the community for, you know, listening in. This is a very long meeting. We do appreciate your input. And we will try to get out any of those questions that were not answered, hopefully in the next week or two, and post it on our site. Dan, do you have any other remaining remarks or the mayor?
I don't know.
No, I don't either. I just appreciate all the work that went into this. And, you know, I think we really did try to answer a lot of the questions. A lot of the speakers that we brought in tonight were brought in based on the public input that we have received and the questions that they wanted answered. You know, I don't know if we answered them all, but we'll continue to work toward doing that.
Again, any other questions? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Regina.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you all. And there you have the questions copied.
They do like three times.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you for the presentation. I do feel more.